Except the minutes of James R. G. is this?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Very good. The next one is...
I abstained.
Oh, and Dan abstains, right. Very good. It's Monday, February 10th. Now, there are only three of us present. This was the meeting where we called it to continue to this evening. So it would either be Sue or Wally would make a motion on this.
Make a motion.
All set. Any discussion? All in favor? So we have three in favor and everyone else abstains. Very good. Okay, we're ready for the A and R.
Right, so you have a plan that was submitted by Peter and Lynn Zoukas for property at 381 New Boston Road. And this probably looks familiar to you because we've gone through several iterations in the process of things. Some of the neighbors are actually ending up with some of the small pieces of land. So on this plan, you can see that parcel A is going to be conveyed to land of Quink, and the plan is so noted that it's not a building law and to be conveyed and annexed with land of Quink. And then parcel B is going to be combined with land of Zoukas that actually fronts on the lake, and that is so noted. And that has appropriate frontage. Parcel A does not need frontage. Since the plan meets the requirement, I would recommend you endorse the plan submitted.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions or comments from the board? If not, we have a motion to endorse the plan. Make a motion to endorse it.
Second.
Any discussion? No in favor? Very good. Put your... Sign? Probably not. Okay. I think we have...
Janaye, do you have...
Say 6:30.
Do you have the plan?
Yes.
I think we have a few minutes before 6:35.
Janaye has the plan that Sue can sign while you're waiting.
Jean, do you want to go over anything on your update?
Yes. I just have a few items for you. I know everybody's been wildly anticipating the reopening of the movie theater. They did have a final inspection on February 18th from the building inspector, and that went well, but they still have a little bit of work to do with Board of Health. But they are having a job fair this weekend, so... And they'll get the rest of the inspections that they need and hopefully open soon. So it was a lot of work for them. They've done a good job down there, so it'll be nice to see that. And then you may have seen on Facebook this weekend, but Noble Energy contacted me this weekend. They were, as you know, they were unable to find somebody to run the sandwich shop there. So they've actually signed a lease with Sturbridge Coffee House, and she'll be opening a second location there and operating that food service part of it. So I think that's good. She's a known commodity. They have a tenant. I think it will help all around. And the taco place will be staying as well.
You have a drive-through.
Pardon?
There'll be a drive-through.
Yes. Yes, and they have a drive-through there. I went to Interstate Towing with the building inspector and made our final inspections. I'll need to go back in the spring. Obviously, they couldn't stripe the parking lot or do any of the plantings, but everything's shaping up very nicely, and I will go back. We actually set a date of June 1st to go back and check the rest of the plantings, but they've done a really good job over there as well. And then I was a little surprised to get some FEMA maps for some more revisions in town, even in addition to the big update that we went through in 2023, the Chickaby River watershed was just studied. So it created a few amendments for us potentially and around South Pond. And then some of the land, not on Big Alum, but some of the roads next to Big Alum. So there are about 35 properties affected. I made maps this evening. We'll be mailing those out. We also have put all the materials on our website, so if anyone's watching and wants to check out their property, they can go online and check. And they can also call me if they'd like to come in and go over those. And I did reach out to FEMA, and they said potentially by the end of December, they could have maps in final form that will have to be adopted by the town, probably in 2026.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much, Jean.
You're welcome.
Okay, it's 6:35, so we'll continue the public hearing. Jean, do you want to give us an update and lead into this?
Yes. Oh, that's right. I forgot you're continuing. So as the board is aware... Brandy, you can move up here. As the board is aware, National Grid has been working with the town through the Conservation Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and now ultimately us to do some tree removal and a lot of work with private property owners. I need to put that in as well. There's the need to remove a significant amount of trees to upgrade the lines, to connect a solar facility that was built in Charlton, and also to improve service in that section of town for the Sturbridge residents. So there were four different approvals that were needed. One was private property owners needed to sign off on trees within their property, as where this hearing is only for the public trees. And I should note that I believe every property owner has signed off. We did have one resident at 169 Podunk Road, and I was actually able to arrange a meeting with her and with National Grid. Tony went out. I wasn't here. Robin actually went out for me, and they were able to come to an agreement that the trees in front of her home would only be trimmed, not removed. So I think that was a positive outcome. Additionally, what started this process is the Board of Selectmen entered into an agreement with the company to be able to go through what we're calling the Podunk Road Annex, which was a portion of Podunk Road that has not been abandoned, but really has not been traveled and has grown in significantly over time. Along with that, they needed to file a request for a notice of intent through Conservation because a great deal of the tree work within the Annex fell under Conservation Commission approval. The hearing this evening is only for the public trees. There are 110 public trees that need to come down. Fifty-five of those are dead or declining or are ash and subject to the Emerald Ash Borer. The remainder are healthy trees that need to come down to make enough clearance for the lines and the poles to be erected. You will note in my report that the property owner at 229 Podunk Road was not in agreement with tree removal. In this case, the trees were right on the property line, so they were public and private. And in that case, we were able to work with National Grid to get an agreement to trim those trees as well. So the trees remaining that you have tonight for you are all subject to the scenic road bylaw and the public shade tree bylaw. They are public healthy trees that need to come down. And I've worked with Heather and with Tony Crane, our tree warden, to come up with compensation, basically, for the trees that are being removed. So the 31 trees that are healthy and contribute to the qualities of a scenic road, and by that I mean a scenic road when you're driving down the road and you have that nice tree canopy and it's shaded and scenic, that's really what's contributing to that scenic road. So there were 31 trees that really contributed to the overall aesthetic of Podunk Road. And so we're asking for a two-to-one replacement on those, which is consistent with other actions of the board in regards to scenic road applications. And then additionally, under the public shade tree removal permit, the bylaw requires basically for inch-per-inch compensation, and every two-inch DBH, correct me if I am wrong, counts as one tree under our bylaw. So with that, we've taken the DBH and divided it into trees and come up with 202 shade trees. And we have deducted the 55 that were dead in decline or subject to the Emerald Ash Borer, and using a figure of 1,000 per tree, we come up with $147,000 in compensation for the public shade tree removal. Additionally, we would recommend conditions that no tree cutting whatsoever occur until all necessary permits have been obtained and any appeals of any decisions have been resolved, and that this special permit, if you choose to grant it, and the order of conditions have both been recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And also that no tree cutting whatsoever occur until the sum of money has been provided to the town for the tree account as specified in the $147,000, and that bonding and all other requirements be met. In terms of the replanting of the 62 trees, we feel that it's best to allow some latitude with the tree warden to work with National Grid, because if you're a property owner now, you may say, you know what, you're cutting down three trees. I'm fine with that. But when those trees are gone, you might say, you know what, I wish I had asked for you to plant a tree back. So we'd like Tony to be able to work with National Grid as they go through the cutting process and then reach out to all of the impacted property owners for potential replanting. So that's kind of our joint staff report from the three of us, and Brandy's here to give you any more specific details that you may need.
Tony, Heather, do you have anything else to add? You're all set with that?
She's somewhere as well.
Very good. And you have the National Grid. Do you want to... Anything you want to add?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, yeah, it looks like you really did a great job putting a lot of work and effort into this. We really appreciate it for all of you. Very good. Anything on the board? Do you have any questions or comments?
Welcome.
Anyone here?
Just a quick question about the annexed trees. Is the calculation of replacement including those annexed trees as well?
No. So you'll notice in the first report that I provided, the Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions. As one of the conditions in their order of condition, they've required two-for-one replication of all of the plantings within their jurisdictional area in the Annex. That, off the top of my head, I believe that was 820 some odd plants. So you'll notice, too, in our calculations, I did not recount those trees because I felt it would be duplicate effort. So Conservation has required that when that area has been cut, that the applicant needs to go back to the commission with a replanting plan to show the replication for approval of that and then replanting. So that will be an additional replanting area under the jurisdiction of the commission.
If I could just interject quickly on that, too. Thanks, Jean, and Heather and Tony for great work on this. Jean and I have gone out, and as have Heather and Tony, in that area as well, and spoken with those residents, because different residents, again, have different sort of desires for what those replantings will look like, whether it's sort of the, you know, the sound barrier that they perceive may be there, concerns about light or visuals of 249, all of that. So the residents would be actively involved in that as well, on that replanting. So we've spoken with several of those residents, actually, as well.
Very good.
Yeah, the other question I have would be in regards to the replacement trees and their proposed locations. Would they be planted in the easement way of these electric lines?
No, under Mass General...
Would you have to deal with them in 20 years? Are they going to be a no-go zone for these trees? Or are they going to be...
So under...
...by trimming in the next 20 or 30 years?
No, so the goal would be that we would avoid that. So under Mass General laws, Chapter 87, we do have the right to replant within 20 feet of the right-of-way and still consider a public shade tree. Obviously, we would need permission of the property owners. So if there are any property owners that do not want trees replanted when they see where they would be located, Tony will work with other impacted properties in that area of cutting, I'll say the path of cutting, to see if we can find new homes for those trees. Any tree that we can't find a home for, an additional $1,000 will be deposited into the tree account for potential replanting later.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, it is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment or ask a question? Yeah, just identify yourself and your address, please.
My name is Jim Flanders. I'm the owner of 15 Leaven Road, which is a project that you guys are discussing. My question, and I'm very happy with what's going on, but I just have one question. Two big trees on this property that go between my right and the property line, which present a little threat to both of our houses in terms of our septic system, or could white poles could damage the road? I don't know if the forest or... And I'm not trying to get into his business, but I don't know if those guys have seen those and made a... He's nodding his head. I know I asked a... Sir, I asked a couple of...
16?
A foreign guy came out to my house about two years ago. He said he would check it out, and I never did hear back from him on the trees, but they're big giant white pines. They've been... Some of them already been... They're rotten, I think. Is there any chance you could...
And they're not tagged at this time?
What's that?
They're not tagged at this time? No, I'm asking...
What's that?
There's a question. Are they tagged now for removal? Okay. So right now, they're not in the plan?
They're not... I mean, they're not within the scope of operation, but I believe they're on the town property. They're a little further back, but you can't miss them, and they're both been damaged already, so...
I'll look at them again, and I'll be honest to the whole town. One of my struggles is the tremendous amount of dead, already-dead trees, and trying to budget and take care of and make everybody safe versus a white pine that has, you know, live limbs on it. You know, they're a maintenance tree, but I've been... Part of my job has been trying to struggle real hard to do right by every taxpayer.
Right.
With the list of dead trees, it's staggering. So I'll definitely come see you.
Thank you very much. I think we're in the area that works to be...
Yeah. If you... I'll get your phone number before we...
Okay.
And I'll come see you.
Appreciate it.
All right. So just to clarify, they're not within the special permit zone, but we will look into it. Great. Tony won. Very good. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, we heard that one. I just want to focus for a minute on the 31 trees that Jean said directly impact the scenic overall appeal of the road. Did we, Tony, absolutely exhaust the possibility of trimming those trees as opposed to taking those down entirely? Because I know there's one property owner, and I... ...property owner contacted me with private trees, and they've reached agreement where those trees are going to be trimmed, and National Grid is still able to do what they need to do and only trim those trees as opposed to taking them down? And I'm wondering if there's any way that even with half of those 31 trees only trimmed rather than taken down entirely? Because I know you said they're going to be replaced two-for-one, but let's face it, it's going to be many years and probably not in the lifetime of the current resident for them to get any kind of satisfaction from the planting of these trees. And also, it's a scenic appeal that can adversely impact their property values, too. So I'm just wondering, did we absolutely exhaust the possibility of only trimming these trees?
We looked at it, and Grid did as well. Even, and I'll just be honest, even the trees that we have agreed to trim at residential request are still somewhat compromising the goals of National Grid.
So I guess, yes, the answer is that, yes.
They're also getting compromised, too.
Right. I think the answer is yes, that they did really look carefully at this, and this is the decision they've made.
Well, I know I'm asking, so is there no way that...
I think that you just said... I did diligence on every tree on the list, and yes.
We spent a lot of time and effort, and Heather and Jean did as well.
So how many trees are getting trimmed as opposed to taking down that are public trees?
At this point, with no residents, at this point, just four.
Sorry, I didn't...
Four. I believe you said four.
So there's four trees getting trimmed that are public trees, and then there's 60 somewhat trees getting totally trimmed.
And replanted.
Well, 31.
31.
31 being taken down, but we get two-for-one in the replacement.
And then there's 70 being taken down that are compromised trees.
Actually, there are more. There are several others that are just being trimmed that didn't have to be advertised in the public hearing notice. So there are others, Mary, that are being trimmed that wouldn't have to be noticed in the public hearing notice. Only the removals had to go into the notice, so...
There are four that were proposed to be removed.
There were four proposed to be removed that we were able to work with National Grid, although they won't get the clearance that they need. And in some cases, Tony's not sure of the survivability of the tree, they've agreed to trim those four. There were others on the list that are town trees that are being trimmed and not removed.
Okay. And then my other question is, how exactly did you arrive at the $1,000? How big are these replacement trees? Because sometimes they can be smaller trees, sometimes they can be larger. Like, I know when the tornado went through Fiskale, we planted very small trees, and they're still pretty small. So how small are they, and how did we arrive at the monetary value?
So they're two-inch diameter by bylaw requirement. They're minimum of two-inch diameter at breast height by bylaw requirement. That's the minimum size. They can be bigger. And the $1,000 is based on an average price of what is been bid out for tree replacements with Mass DOT.
Okay. And are we putting it in the minimal size by bylaw or not?
We're at least a minimum. We haven't required them, they have to do the tree planting plan. So they have to do at least 62 two-inch trees.
Okay, so...
Yes.
So they have to at least do our minimum?
Yes.
And did we ever consider asking National Grid to put in a larger-than-minimum, given the impact that it's going to have in this neighborhood?
So...
I just feel like, you know, this doesn't primarily benefit Sturbridge. I mean, the primary goal was the solar farm in Charlton. It's really a Charlton project. And I just wonder if the board might consider not requiring the minimum with respect to the trees and maybe asking them to put in a somewhat larger tree? Because, again, it's not the residents of Podunk Road or the town of Sturbridge that requested this project, and it is going to adversely impact the scenic value of that road, and I do think maybe some property values. So I guess I'm asking the board to perhaps consider tonight requiring... Maybe, because these are healthy trees, maybe we require not the minimum two-inch, but maybe a four-inch tree or something that's going to add a little bit more value to the residents who currently live there. And I'm just asking the board if you might consider that as a possibility.
I think maybe...
I understand why it's going to happen. It's the negative. It is the minimum. I don't understand why...
You made a good point on that. So Tony, you probably have more familiarity with this than we do. We've seen this before in other plans where, like even on the senior center. In other words, we ask them to try to get some bigger trees in there. So the bigger tree becomes like maybe a three and a half or a four instead of a two. So, you know, there is a much greater value of cost for that, but the overall size of it isn't that much, you know, different compared to what's been taken down from a mature tree.
When you look at DBH, you're right.
So in other words, and this is just a minimum. I mean, they can put in a larger tree. I mean, what would be the practical largest tree that somebody could put in economically or...
I mean, maintenance is a big concern when you start getting larger root balls and those... You know, we want these things to stay healthy and grow. And again, you know, the larger tree that... The larger the tree that you plant, the more waterings, the more... Those kind of concerns come into play. You know, this is new for me, but that's been part of what we had thought about and talked about and that kind of thing. Again, you know, I'm all for taking some feedback from residents and looking forward, actually, to that process, but that's where we are at this point.
Now, is the two-inch minimum in our bylaw or in some kind of regulation?
In the bylaw.
It's in our bylaw. Yeah, okay.
Right. It's in the bylaw that the replacements have to be at least two-inch caliper. I think, you know, Tony's right, there's some flexibility out in the field if, you know, a larger tree maybe was warranted. But I think, you know, the other thinking, too... I don't know where Mary... I can't see Mary back there.
Oh, sorry. I want to keep speaking.
No, that's okay. I think, you know, the other thinking, too, as we went through this and we looked at it, is there are other trees around the trees that are coming down, and we looked at, you know, at the... They have to at least do the minimum. They could do larger. At the minimum caliber, it's 62 trees. If they go larger, it would reduce the number of trees. So our main concern was making sure that all of the impacted properties could at least have two trees for each one that was coming down if they so desired.
Okay.
So I think, you know, that was ours. Plus, there's an additional $147,000 that has to be deposited into the shade tree account. So, you know, that could potentially contribute to additional trees in that area as well.
Now, can that shade tree account also be used for maintenance of trees or just to replace trees?
That's more of a...
I think it's just for replacement.
It's good to have that for that.
Yeah, sure. Good. Okay. Any other question would be for Tony. If they were, or the board would consider a larger replacement tree, wouldn't that be the excavation and placement of that root ball be disruptive to the root systems around the trees that are already... Well, again, that's definitely one of them. It's a very... We live in a very rocky landscape. I used to do excavations years ago, and it's hard to dig a fairly large hole consistently here without doing a lot of damage. Yeah, exactly. So I'd be a little concerned about going above that two and a half.
And plus, we're also dealing with a bylaw. I mean, you know, we have a bylaw that says that's what it is. It's a minimum two inches.
That was a minimum.
Right. So we can't say it's minimum, but we want... Yeah, but I mean, in other... We can't say we want you to do four inches, you know, really. I mean...
Well, we can, because it said minimum.
Then why would we have a bylaw?
Because it says minimum. So the minimum of two inches means we could have six feet if we wanted.
Okay, then, good. That's maybe a good way to look at it. That's...
Right? That's the minimum we can have is two inches.
Right.
I'd like to refer to what Mary said as far as the residents who live there and the two-inch tree that's going to come and replace a beautiful tree that is existing. And if the tree is alive and well, why shouldn't National Grid be responsible for maintaining the trimming and the maintenance so that their business can function through those trees in Sturbridge while Charlton receives all the good revenue? Why should our residents suffer the loss of these big seasoned trees because of this project? I understand that, and I support that thought. And I know you've all done a lot of work, but I'm just thinking that as a resident and as value-added to a property, it matters. And I know it's difficult, but I think we need to put that on record and think about it, and think about what's actually going on for the residents of our town, you know?
I would agree, and we've done a lot of outreach to residents. We actually had many residents who said they didn't even want a tree replaced. And I will note, too, there are a lot of private trees that are being taken down, and they've all signed off on those. So I think the best thing that we can do is have the condition at the minimum of 62 trees at two-inch caliber. With... If you notice on the condition, it also says that Tony will work with National Grid on the replanting plan, and as they're going through, if they identify locations where, gee, there was a huge impact, the property owner is, you know, really devastated with the way that it looks, then maybe Tony can work with National Grid to have some larger caliper, and then we just deduct. So, you know, every two inches is one tree. So if they did two three-inch trees, then we're going to deduct one tree. You know what I mean?
But we're getting two-for-one. So if we just get one-for-one at a decent size...
Right, but I think Tony...
It's value-added.
Right, but Tony would need to look at that in the field.
Right.
We couldn't sit here and say tonight that...
I'm no expert. It's just a thought.
Let's do 30-inch...
And it's just a discussion for...
Right.
For tonight.
I think he has to take everything into consideration, like where can they dig? Where can they put it?
I know.
You know, so it's too difficult to make that...
As long as that flexibility is there when the trees are removed...
I think it's absolutely that flexibility.
That Tony can do that.
That's a big part of it.
That's terrific.
Which is kind of why we loosened up that condition a little bit to...
Right.
Leave discretion to the tree warden, working with National Grid to find appropriate locations, appropriate species, and appropriate size, so...
Very good. Very good.
That's good.
This is more of a technical question, more for Tony, is that once it's decided that the trees are going to come out and you're going to replace them with whatever size you're having, then in digging the hole and the town will be responsible for digging the holes or no, you have a contractor that's going to be doing that?
They will have a contractor do that.
National Grid, so my question to you is, based upon the number of trees going in and the area that you're going in, is where do you estimate the survivability of the trees to be? And the other thing is, once they're in the ground, they're going to be watered. What's the plan for that or is there a plan for that? I mean, not watered for the rest of their lives other than natural rainfall, but initially when a tree goes in the ground, you have to still...
So we'll, we'll bring out a watering truck with the planting, we'll water them and then I like to install what are called tree diapers. So they have an absorbent material and they absorb rainwater and then they do a slow release and then you cover them with mulch to, you know, slow down evaporation from them as well. So that helps, that helps.
And based upon that, that act, that plan there, which sounds appropriate, is survivability in your experience, how many trees do you think you'd lose or you hope to keep, you hope to keep them all, obviously, but?
Right, obviously, we want to keep them all. We want, you know, people who are accepting them on their properties, you know, not to hit them with lawn mowers and, you know, do things like that. So there are a lot of variables, but from my knowledge, the tree diapers do have a very good, high survivability rate as opposed to doing nothing, then if you do nothing, they're going to die.
So as opposed to any other type of plan or thing that you would have anywhere else, there's not an acceptable loss type of thing or figured into this as far as trees that are going to succumb to for whatever reason? So if you're going to plant 100 trees, do you expect that 95 of them are going to be, do well and five of them?
I couldn't say, right, yeah.
I could say, but is there something built into the system that you're thinking that we hope that we have a 95%?
With that would have to, we would have to work with Tony.
Okay, I'm just wondering if that was already discussed, what do you think?
Yes, I can't pick a number, but I can tell you, for example, all the arbor day trees that we've planted, 100% survival rate and those...
Those are twigs, those are little tiny things.
No, not the trees for the kids that, we do a special ceremony every year.
The vague ones, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, in the four years I've been overseeing this, the survival rate's been 100%. And in most cases, her system, the additional watering that they do has proved to be very, very successful.
That's my good truth.
In these cases, they didn't even have that.
Okay.
No, of course, weather has something to do with it.
Good, okay.
Thank you, that's all I need to say.
All right, any other?
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Yes?
A question, MC Porter, 93 Fiskale. The $1,000 that's being given to the homeowners and the trees being replaced?
There's no money going to the homeowners?
There's no money going to the homeowners for those?
No, these are town trees, so any, any money will come to the town in the tree warden account and the trees will be replanted with, in conjunction with the tree warden, the property owner and National Grid to determine the locations. Because we can't replant back under the wires, so we need to go...